We're on. You gotta hold it down.
All right. Well, you welcome about just what about using the Zoom recorder?
Yeah, we're doing that too.
Okay.
Just being safe.
The village board meeting has started live. So can Andy, can you show us that flag again? We can do a pledge of the flag.
Was that me?
We're gonna do the pledge of the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag. With a little bit of delay, that sounded really good. Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from March 19th, 2020?
Moved. Second.
Any changes, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, when you make a motion, give your name so it's easier for me. Just so people know, this is our first attempt at doing a village board meeting with Zoom and using Facebook Live. We hope it's all working. We really don't have any way to know until we get done to whether it all worked. Obviously, it's working as far as we can see each other. We're making every attempt to be live so that people in the village can see the meeting. Because right now, we've been ordered not to let anybody, the public into any of our events. So the next item would be citizens' comments. At this time, instead of letting people sign on to our meeting and talk to us, what we'd ask is, when we're done, PAC B will have a copy of the meeting. If you have a comment or want somebody to respond to your comment, put it on underneath the taped version of the meeting and probably I or one of the department heads would respond to you. Trustees' comments. We'll start up with Andy.
Just agenda items only.
Okay.
Hoping everyone is staying well and other than that, just the agenda.
Mark?
I'm gonna stick to the agenda, other than I'd like to request an executive session to update the board on a contract negotiation.
Okay, that'll be item. I'll make that item F because I have an item E to add.
And then maybe if everybody could put their, this on mute unless they're talking, that might be better for the back. There's some feedback coming through on my, on my computer audio.
Okay. All right, we move on down to Bruce.
I'll stick to the agenda.
Mike?
Agenda fine.
Where'd your mask go?
I'm in my house, so I'm not wearing it. And it's too small for my big head.
Yeah, okay. Ruth, Seagull?
Just the agenda, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, they're saying on Facebook Live that the volume is all the way up and it's still tough to hear. I don't know if you can do anything about that.
I have no idea. We're trying. Do you have a few things to mention? I did talk this morning with Linda Ross and looks pretty much like the parade is going to be, at the parade as we know it for Memorial Day will be canceled. There is a possibility they would look at rescheduling it sometime in the summer, possibly. But if you know, if you watched our parade and seen the number of contestants, the number of entrants, all those bands that are in, none of them are practicing. They don't know when they'll be able to get together to practice, so they can't commit. You know, it's hard to get classes from school to march from, you know, Palmer School or something like that when they're not in school. So, you know, this thing might get lifted before then, who knows? But it looks like they might try to do the ceremonies, you know, go to the monument in front of the post office to drop a wreath in off the bridge, go to St. Mary's Cemetery and then go to Riverside and do the wreath at the flag and the wreath at the monument and that type of stuff. So keep an eye out for that, people, to see what's gonna happen. It's, it kinda hits hard at home when, to think our parade, you know, which has been such a tradition, is not gonna take place. But I know that if we, if we had a parade, a lot of people would show up. You know, even if we said, please try to stay six feet apart, that would never happen. I mean, we just couldn't do it and do it safely, even if we were close to being all right. So just to let the public know, our employees, if they're out in the public and they're in a, inside of social distancing limits, will be wearing masks. For your safety, for our safety, and it's the law. I see five more deaths in the county today. This was the worst day I think we've had with five in one day. The number of incidents of people testing positive is down a little bit. The curve is starting to flatten, but we need some better, way better numbers than that. It's hard for people to accept what's going on, but boy, I tell you, when you start hearing deaths like that and they're in our community, that really hits home. The mayors, county mayors met Tuesday via Zoom. We had 12 of us, including Mayor Walsh from the city, and we shared a lot of what's going on. 12 mayors, only two of them reported anybody with the COVID-19 virus, one in Batville and one in the city, or DPW worker Steve, so. So fortunately, the villages have not been hit hard, you know, the work staffs, and we wanna keep it that way. We would, we would prefer at the end of this to have a zero next to Baldwinsville. Going to meet tomorrow in a phone conference with the county executive. I'm kind of expecting that we're going to hear that maybe an updated state of the state type thing, the state of the county, is, are we going to get our infrastructure money? I've been, it's been hinted that the Main Street grants will not be touched, that we will be able to proceed when things loosen up, so that the seven businesses that are gonna get some county money will then be able to proceed. And I'm assuming that the county executive will want that to go fast, so that they can show the public, we're back somewhat normal. Things are, things are happening. You know, that's something they were excited about, and I think he wants everybody to continue to be excited about it. If any of you here have some questions for the county executive that pertains to our level, you can let me know after the meeting, send me an email, and I'll bring it up tomorrow. And we're, the mayors are meeting again next Tuesday. We're gonna meet once a week. And it's, and it's good because they have ideas, they have, they see, they have different situations than what we have. Some of them are closer to the city and have, you know, more influx of people crossing into their villages. We'll find, we're able to share, and it's nice to share ideas. And, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to get ahold of some equipment. We do have fire department, it's not ours like in some communities, but what you do feel like if you can help them would be nice. The ambulance corps, our departments have just as much trouble getting ahold of stuff as the other people do. So my wife has been fairly active in trying to locate different stuff, and I know she's helped the police department a little bit in providing some stuff and then stuff that we sent down to the DPW and Village Hall early on. It's a little harder to get stuff now. Prices are starting to go up. I actually saw that they were selling face masks with SU on them, or the Yankees, if you wanna spend 50 bucks, you can get yourself a logo-covered face mask. I guess that's all I have for now. We'll move on to department heads. We'll start with Bob Baldwin.
Stick with the agenda.
Okay. Next, we'll go to codes. Greg?
Just wanna let the residents know that the codes office is open. We are accepting permit applications. You know, homeowners can definitely work on their own homes. Single workers can do construction projects. So we were talking about the Main Street program earlier. If there's individual contractors that were hired for these businesses, some, some of that could move forward. Even though it's not deemed essential, a sole employee or a sole worker is allowed to continue working. So just wanted to make sure that they know that. The fire department is continuing their construction because they are to see, they're deemed an essential entity and the construction on that project's allowed. For the most part, my office is running normal, we're just not in the office.
And just to remind everybody who's not aware of it, all of our offices are closed to the public. Doesn't mean you won't get response, but we wanna protect our employees who are manning phones, and I'll guarantee you that when I call, like on Monday morning, I call Mo at Village Hall, she's been busy. She's had calls, and I know that Ruth Troy over at the senior center, she's keeping busy. And Greg and dispatch at the police department, I know Steve, when I've been talking to him on the phone, he'll say, oh, I've gotta get this call, this is the second time this person's calling, I better pick it up. And so he's getting action, and that's sort of our promise to people is, we may not let you in our offices, but we will try to take care of your problem. And again, I've not had any people complain to me that they haven't been satisfied. Let's see, who we have next? Village clerk, Mo.
Well, I just wanted to say that the clerk's office has been pretty much business as usual. The office has been staffed every day, even though the building has been locked. Our March Madness for taxes is over, and I just wanna give a big thanks to Jody for jumping right in and we collected the taxes. Water billing is going out, and if any payments, you just need to drop them, put them in the drop box outside our door, or mail them in, or pay by credit card on the website. And regarding the election, the, obviously, it's been rescheduled, but the new date has not been announced. Actually, I have a webinar tomorrow, learning more about the new process for the elections and such. Not really sure what we're gonna find out, but that's tomorrow, and I will keep you posted. We also have to learn about the organizational meeting, which had been postponed because of the elections.
Sounds like it's busy.
Yeah.
Move on. Anna's not with us tonight. Senior center, Ruth?
As the mayor said, I'm in the building answering calls, so please call if you have a question or concern. Center staff have been calling folks on our mailing list. The calls are looking at information referral for meeting their food and other essential needs. Also, a reminder regarding the 2020 census and the importance of participating in that and how it impacts our community. And information about an emergency SNAP allotment that's being, coming out for, for anybody who is already on SNAP. The county officer aging is bringing information to us to disseminate and then asking us to give like a daily update via email about what's happening in our area, so we're keeping in communication with them. We did mail out a letter, not our usual newsletter, but a letter to give the folks numbers and resource information, and we're working on a video message to put out, just to sort of a keep in touch, reminders about the safe practices and that kind of thing from staff and instructors and volunteers from the center. And also hoping to work with PAC B on getting some of our fitness programs on the air, and that's, that's in the works. So those things are going on.
And Meals on Wheels is going full speed.
Yeah, Don's very busy. She has added probably at least 30 new folks that were otherwise not needing that kind of assistance, but under the current circumstances, they do. Also, we did start getting calls for masks today with the change in the executive order, so we're starting to have people call and ask if we have masks. So we'll do our best to provide those as they come in to us.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Ruth. Public work, Steve?
Our primarily questions relate to brush collection. Normally, this time of year, we would be collecting brush every week. We're not. We're gonna be doing it down our normal summer schedule, which is the first and third week of each month. So if you are out and collecting brush, give it to the street, we will pick it up. But at this time of year, when you're normally used to seeing it every week, we'll be out every other week, first and third of the month. We are not doing any park-a-truck program, and the reason being is that we are not allowing any DPW employees to be two people in a cab of a truck, and the only way to deliver a park-a-truck is to have someone follow them and then bring them back to the DPW in another vehicle. So park-a-truck's not available right now for anyone. We've got a few calls on it. I don't know if Mo has, but if she, I think I just mentioned it to Jody, that we're not gonna be doing it for a while, so no park-a-truck program. Water department is still operational. If anyone has any questions about water, be assured, water plant is operating as normal. Your water quality is no different than what it has been historically and continuing into the future. You will get good quality potable water at your tap, so there's no issues there. If anyone has any questions, they can call up to the highway garage. It is manned nearly the entire day. So there's someone there, or if I'm not there, normally, we would have Louise there. Louise is not working right now, only on a call-in basis, so we have more time when, when there's not someone there, but I'm also not leaving as much. So we have pretty good phone coverage.
Thanks, Steve. And then finally, chief?
Thank you, mayor. Just to remind our citizens that all of our officers, our staff continues to be on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We continue to focus on our patrols throughout the neighborhoods, as well as our business checks. We know a number of businesses are closed, and we're doing our best to really check those multiple times throughout the day to ensure that those remain safe and secure. We have made some arrests during this time period. We've arrested some people, steal some items from some of our local stores, we were arrested there. And we have been responding to social distancing calls, both that are, that are called in through the, either the police department or the 911 center, as well as complaints that are funneled in through the county executive's office. Some people email there. So we are following up with those, and we're, we're doing our best to, again, with those, educate, seek voluntary compliance, and we found that that's been very successful so far. And then mayor, just to segue back to a comment we made earlier regarding the $50 masks for Yankee logo on there, I personally couldn't see many of those being sold, but if they said Red Sox on them.
I knew that was coming.
They might sell.
I knew that was coming. Mike and I have, Mike does, usually does a report with Shelley Hoffman on Mondays at 10 o'clock live on that, her website, and I do one on, usually on Wednesday. And so I noticed the first time that Mike did one, he had his Red Sox logo quite prominently displayed. So I did mine, I had made sure to have my Zach Britton glove, baseball, and picture right behind me, so we, the Yankees were represented. So then the next week, he had the logo in a different spot, very prominent. And so I had, on Wednesday, I had a Yankee sweatshirt on. And I didn't notice this, I think he had the logo again showing behind you, and so I had my Yankee hat sitting on the table right behind me. So we're, we're having a little bit of, there's no baseball, but the Yankees and Red Sox are going at it big time on our little Facebook stuff. Appreciate the fun, Mike. You know, you gotta do something to keep your mind from going crazy.
And I do appreciate that opportunity with Shelley Hoffman. Both of us, you know, there's over between 1,500 and 2,000 people every week seem to watch both of our, our presentations, so it's a great way to, to connect with the community for them to, to know what's going on.
Yeah. Bob Wicks has been on on Tuesdays. The other day, she did Greg. Greg did a great job of explaining the code situation and, you know, trying to explain to people that, don't put your brush in the road, which we keep trying to emphasize. Also, you know, that the code office is working and that there are issues that come up with safety that he has to enforce, that it could be health issues if he doesn't step in. I mean, you kinda get the picture that people are thinking, hey, this is a rough situation, why are you bothering us with little stuff like that? But it's quality of life issues, and that's why we have a code officer to begin with. And Greg has been out there and been aggressive, and, and I appreciate, he made, he even made his own mask, put it on Facebook on how to make it. He's just a jack of all trades. So Greg, we appreciate that. Move on to new business. We have three intermunicipal agreements that we have had sort of sitting on the table. This is a chance maybe to get them taken care of. We should've done them, two of them the last meeting probably, but it was kinda strange that last meeting, we were all spread out all over.
Some pending business also.
What's that?
I think there was some pending business.
Oh, the local COVID issues. Okay.
I didn't know if you wanted to move that, or?
Do we have, do we have any issues anybody needs to bring up as far as the, dealing with the pandemic and locally? It seems like most of the people have been pretty good. I mean, it sounds like with the chief, we're not having a whole lot of issues. Anybody has any questions or further stuff on the COVID-19?
The only comment I would make is that the, there have been statewide orders and of course, there's executive orders countywide, which, which basically cover most everything. The only question that I would put up to the board is whether or not there are any specific issues relative to the village of Baldwinsville where, as a result of this emergency, you feel that, that there are specific actions that need to be taken, whether it's Paper Mill Island, whether it's the, the state, for example, has already closed any boat liveries and loading dock, boat loading docks and so forth. But I, I'm not sure that there are any specific issues in the village that would need to be covered, that wouldn't be covered by the, by the general rules that have gone on overall. But if there are things that people think of, then you can issue an executive order relative to those under the new procedures that the state has come out with. If that happens, then that's gotta be run by the Department of Health first, but I just thought it would be good, if there is anything in the village.
I don't, I don't see anything right now. Everybody that I've talked to, the mayors and stuff, they're all keeping parks open because they think it's very important for mental health, that people have a place to get out to, you know, walk and be in the fresh air, and especially our parks that are on the river. I mean, it's very refreshing. You go down and sit on a bench at Mercer Park, watch the river float by, watch the ducks and the geese, and, you know, it's, it's gotta be good for refreshing the mental aspects of it. Community park, you know, you walk through the trail through the woods. I, I would hate to have to close the parks. Obviously, if, if Mike said, we're having a lot of issues in the parks, we need to do something, obviously, we would do that. But at this point, I think that's salvation for some people to be able to get out. You know, you've got Lysander Park for people in this part of the village that can wander over, and they've got trails in the woods, just can't play tennis or pickleball or those kind of things right now. And as hard as it is, I guess the snow helps because it will discourage people from being out doing some of those events for a few days. I, if anybody has any issues and please, as far as parks and you see things being abused as far as that, please contact, you know, 911, they'll get ahold of our police department. And, you know, if it's an issue, we'll take care of it. And I, good idea, Bob, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to put it before the board as a discussion item, so that if there were some thoughts that you had, and again, this whole, the idea of curfews and, and banning public assembly in, in some areas, maybe in, in a city like Manhattan or in other areas that might be appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate for the village, but I just wanted to put it up for discussion in case there was something.
Somebody did mention on our Facebook site, were we gonna put in the canoe kayak launches? And I just said, we're kinda waiting for, see how this thing goes, and the canal probably is not even open. I'm guessing that the state would discourage us from putting them in, I don't know.
The, the use of boat launches has been banned right now.
And so, well, that would include kayak launches, I assume. So we'll just have to wait till that changes. Obviously, we hope that would be one of the early things to get back on, on the beam because that, you know, there's a lot of people that really, you know, maybe not walkers, but they like to get out in their kayaks, and, you know, Greg's, Greg's a big kayaker. We, we'd like to get, and we're like everybody else, we'd like to get back to normal, but we don't wanna encourage things that are gonna make people, you know, get sick. Flat out, that's all. Move on to new business. We have three intermunicipal agreements, as I was starting to say, that, a couple of them have been on the, the table, we just didn't get to them. So can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the intermunicipal cooperation agreement with the town of Lysander to share resources in the undertaking of public works and other municipal improvement projects and services? Is that just with Lysander? Yes. This was something that Bob Wicks had proposed. We've been doing it over the years. We've always had this intermunicipal cooperation. He wanted to put it in writing, so.
This is Bruce, I'll make the motion.
This is Park, I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Okay.
This is Mark again. The question is, have, have we reached out to the town of Van Buren to see if they wanna participate, and is there any feedback on why they aren't in this agreement?
I'm gonna be honest with you, I'd be like, no. I know that Bob had, Bob Wicks had approached me and said, I'd like to get an agreement with the village. Would be smart probably for us to follow this up. We may have one with Van Buren, we'll have to check.
Steve, have we worked with Van Buren?
Yeah, we, we have, and I think what happened is this was driven by Bob, and Bob is making them with other municipalities. So he's probably got one with Van Buren, he's got one with us now. He wanted these in place. We had something previously, there was an informal, well, it was a, it was a, an agreement at one point. But we've worked closely with both of those municipalities in the past, and we, we've never had anything that I know of with Van Buren. Not to say we couldn't, but, and we've never had a problem with sharing equipment.
I'll call Claude tomorrow and see if he thinks we need one, or if he's comfortable with just sharing. I mean, you know, it's what we've done in the past, and, and, you know, Bob being new, I think wanted to make sure things were neat and tidy, and so. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Actually, they did suggest a roll call vote. I don't know if that's, do you think that's necessary, Mo or Bob?
Does Mo feel comfortable in the roll, the current vote?
What's that?
Is Mo comfortable in attaining the vote as it was?
Yes, I am.
And that's sufficient.
All right, so that's carried. Second motion, can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an intermunicipal agreement regarding shared services of code enforcement officers with Lysander and Van Buren. Terms of the agreement shall be from the date of acceptance through December 31st, 2020, and shall be renewed automatically unless either party notifies the other. This was a request from Greg, who was concerned that if, with the virus, if he or other code officers doing their duty got sick, there would be somebody to cover for him. So can I get a motion?
This is Mark, I'll make that motion. This is Mike, I'll second it.
Go ahead.
We've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item C, can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the intermunicipal wastewater agreement with the county of Anadaga with the term from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020? One objective of this agreement is to provide the village of Baldwinsville with information necessary to enable the village to operate and maintain its system in compliance with county requirements. This is a standard agreement we have every year, right, Steve?
Correct.
So this is just renewing it. Can I get a motion?
This is Mark, I'll make that motion. This is Andy, I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yep. I'd like to, so this is something we've had in the past?
It is. It is. That's what it is. It's the establishment of what rates are and services that the county provides to local municipalities. The only thing that we've used in the capacity is their sewer video, uh, capacity. So we've, we have brought them in before to run a video of, of various stretches of our sewer system. There's an established practice for doing that. So, now they do other things as well. If you wanted them to maintain a sewer lift station for you, you could. And there's various things in that agreement, but the only service that we've used in the years I've been here has been the, uh, the video capability, which saves us the cost of purchasing a video camera.
My concern were, A, there is no rate schedule. So we're proving whatever the county's rate is without them telling us. And that when you go down to article six, it talks, it says the municipality agrees that it will search for sources of SS of INI and promptly address in the INI within it, the system upon discovery. Agreeing to this, there's two elements where we're saying if something's determined, we're going to take care of it.
Yeah.
Um, as long as I've been on the board, we've been facing INI. I'm just concerned this county all of a sudden is going to say we need to go out and spend a million dollars and fix it.
Um, I, I think that language has been in there in the past and we've, we've continued to face it, but greatly we've faced it in some isolated areas over the last two years. Uh, so I don't know that the county would be in position to, uh, criticize us for that, uh, for the lack of doing it. Um, there are others, there are other, you know, organizations that provide camera servicing and that is the only thing we've used. If you're not interested in the contract, I don't, uh, particular need to have this contract in place. We've never used anything but the video and I could hire a contractor for that. Um.
So this isn't in association with the county taking over the sewers for all, the whole county? This has nothing to do with that?
No. Uh, there is a contract out there for doing that, a lease agreement that has been shared with, uh, one of the county legislators. I saw a copy of it, but, uh, they haven't approached us with that yet.
This isn't a backdoor into it?
Um, I don't believe so, no, because it's, it's been around for a while.
Okay. Thank you.
Satisfied, Bruce? Any more questions? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Now we have to, we have a motion to declare Friday, April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day in the village of Baldwinsville. Can I get a motion?
It's Ruth. I'll make the motion.
This is Megan. I'll second.
Now I have a proclamation that I will read. You know how much I love to read these proclamations. Uh, whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day, yeah, Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, provide life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas Baldwinsville has been repeatedly recognized as a tree city USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for over 32 years and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore I, Richard A. Clark, mayor of the village of Baldwinsville, to hereby proclaim Friday, April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day in the village of Baldwinsville. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the wellbeing of this and future generations. And I would sign that as soon as we approve. All in favor? Aye.
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 Closed? Carried. Okay, that is signed. Item E. I get a motion to extend the state of emergency that we passed at our, uh, second March meeting until May 15th. It really, uh, we haven't had emergency type situations that we've had to go into, but this does cover us paying employees, uh, during this stretch when they're, we've asked them to stay home. Um, it does allow, if there were an emergency overnight and the chief called or Steve called and we had to do something, uh, I could, I can act without having to have the board address it and we can get something done immediately. Uh, and don't anticipate, certainly don't hope that doesn't, nothing like that wherever to happen. Um, but it just extends it through, uh, the middle of May, which the 15th is the day that the governor has set this NY pause to end on the 15th. Uh, and so we would coincide with that, which as Bob had said, the, most of what we're operating by has been handed down from the state and the county as far as emergency situation, we're, and that's our guidance. This is for anything that maybe wouldn't get covered under those two, uh, bodies. So we do have one in place that, that expired at midnight last night. And this would be a chance to renew that and keep this going through the 15th of May. So could I get a motion to extend that resolution?
This is Andy. I'll move.
This is Megan. I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carried. Um, so that's item E. Item F is executive session. So, um, anything else that you think we need to discuss before we go into executive session? And I would tell the public that we have no, uh, action plan from this executive session. This is to discuss contract negotiations. And, uh, so we'll exit out of this meeting and go into another meeting where the public won't be invited. So whoever was here tonight, I appreciate you watching. Uh, I hope you could hear us. Uh, again, it's our first experiment doing it this way. I think it went pretty good. And, um, could I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
It's Ruth. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. It's Mark.
All right. All in favor?
Uh,
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Hopefully see you in two weeks the same way. All right. We can stop our live production.